Hey, it's okay, it's okay. I've been there a million times.
I was used to it.
Is that an unexcused tardy?
No.
Isn't that rude?
Oh, thank you very much. You did not. That's so much fun. We gotta talk about it. Yeah, which reminds me about, I have an idea about George. Mr. Warehouse. All right. Well, I will call the regular city council meeting for October 7, 2014, to order. And Betty Taylor, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Would you please, all please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It's great to see a nearly packed house. We just had a presentation for the Performing Arts Conference Center and a sort of an update on where we're at. And I was, then we had some question and answers by the council members. So, sorry, we got a little bit of a late start, but that's, we had a great opportunity to see a designed charrette and got some great questions asked and answered, and those will continue to do so. So, we appreciate the good work of PJ with Lorax and Wendy with LMN Architects. We're really excited about the direction that this is heading. We've got a packed agenda tonight, so we'll go ahead and get started. As you can see, before we get started, really down our agenda, this was at the grand opening last week of Dick's Sporting Goods, which has now opened. Yeah, it's great. Fifty thousand square feet of new retail at the Commons Mall. And in fact, what that is, is that actually is not even the front of Dick's Sporting Goods. That's the new entryway that Dick's Sporting Goods punched through the mall on the north side of the Commons, which represents much more connectivity in the mall, much more light. And this is a great addition to the retail space and the business core in Federal Way. So, I was joined there by many of my colleagues here on the council, and it was great to see the folks there. So, that's why they, we always get to change the pictures. And I said, "We gotta have the picture from Dick's grand opening." So, that was a lot of fun. We do have a lot on our agenda tonight. Let's go ahead and get started with the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We do have Judge Larson who's in the room, Judge Dave Larson. And before we get any further, we've got Councilmember Honda, who is, has been very involved in domestic violence awareness issues. And I'll go ahead and turn this over to Councilmember Honda for the reading of the proclamation.
Thank you. Would Doug Baxter please come to the podium and the other members of the Federal Way Domestic Violence Task Force? This is a task force that meets on the last Friday of the month, every month here in Federal Way, and they do a lot of good work. All right, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels. And whereas, according to the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, police respond to about fifty thousand domestic violence calls every year in Washington and approximately twenty-one hundred domestic violence calls every year here in the City of Federal Way. And whereas, even with the significant number of calls responded to by police, seventy percent of domestic violence that occurs goes unreported. And whereas, although men and children can be victims of domestic violence, it is committed mostly against women, and it is the leading cause of injury to women between the ages of fifteen to forty-four in the United States, more than car accidents, muggings, and rapes combined. And whereas, children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And children that experience domestic violence are impacted in their education and are more likely to continue the cycle of domestic violence in dating relationships as youth and in adult relationships. And whereas, each year, medical expenses from domestic violence total at least three to five billion dollars and business forfeit another one hundred million dollars in lost wages, in sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas, in response to the prevalence of domestic violence in this community, the Federal Way Domestic Violence Task Force members have been working towards promoting prevention, victim safety, community awareness, and abuser accountability through organization, education, and outreach. Now therefore, we, the mayor and undersigned city council members, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge our citizens to recognize this critical problem facing our entire community, work to prevent domestic violence, work to increase services to domestic violence victims and their children, and continue efforts to eliminate this crime which affects all of us in this signed, in this community, our state, and in our nation. Signed, the seventh day of October 2014, by the mayor and the city council.
Domestic violence. Domestic violence has received a lot of attention nationally lately, mainly due to the actions of a few football players. We would like to think that domestic violence only happens to athletes, or it happens somewhere else. But the truth is, domestic violence is a critical problem all across the nation and also here in Federal Way. The Federal Way Police Department receives around two hundred calls a month for domestic violence. This makes it in the top five reasons that police are called. Our court saw over seven hundred court cases involving domestic violence. Keep in mind that most incidents of domestic violence are never reported. National statistics show that one in four women will experience domestic violence sometime in their lifetime. Over three million children will witness domestic violence. The effects of domestic violence can be devastating. The trauma associated with domestic violence, with witnessing domestic violence between parents can be toxic for children. Federal Way is lucky to have a group of people working together to send the message that domestic violence has no place in our community. Federal Way Domestic Violence Task Force created an informational pamphlet around teen dating violence that has gone around to all the high schools and many nonprofit organizations. We work continuously to break down barriers across systems to make sure the survivors get the support they need. There's still a lot of work to be done, but the more we talk about domestic violence, the easier it'll be to end it. So, thank you so much for spotlighting us tonight.
Thank you so much. Actually, can you please introduce the folks behind you?
Sure. These are all members of the Federal Way Domestic Violence Task Force. Councilmember Susan Honda, Diane Zorro, Janet Chance, Kathy Williams, Chief Andy Wong, and Deputy Chief Kyle Sumter.
Well, thank you. And I just want to say that, you know, in my, you know, it is, it is, you know, unfortunately, it is such a, you know, prevalent crime in law enforcement. And in the sixteen years that I spent at the King County Prosecutor's Office, I would say well over half of that was spent specifically in domestic violence units. So, you know, on behalf of the council and the community, we want to say thank you very much for the work you do. We used to have, when I led the domestic violence unit at the prosecutor's office, we used to say that misdemeanor homicide prosecution is really, excuse me, misdemeanor domestic violence prosecution is homicide prevention. And that's, that's really what, why this is so important is that really we're trying to arrest that cycle of violence before it spirals to the point where it gets to that, to that level. So, on behalf of the people of this community and on behalf of the council, thank you so much for all your work on behalf of those victims. Okay, and we have a proclamation for the National Manufacturers Day. Deputy Mayor Burbage.
Thank you very much. I see two people standing with our new Economic Development Director, and I assume they are Bala, who is project manager for Valmet Manufacturing, and also Becca Martin, who is president and CEO of the Federal Way Chamber of Commerce. And I see you already coming to the podium. Thank you very much. And that's, that's fine. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then bring it over to you. Whereas, the United States manufacturing sector is on the rise for the first time in over a decade, and economic output and employment are now growing steadily across the nation. And whereas, manufacturing output for the nation has grown thirty-eight percent since the end of the Great Recession, and the sector accounts for nineteen percent of the rise in our nation's gross domestic product. And whereas, the average annual weekly hours for production workers in the manufacturing sector have climbed to their highest level since the mid-1940s. And whereas, in the state, there are nearly seven thousand manufacturing establishments employing over two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand Washingtonians, comprising nine-point-six percent of the total labor force in the state. The sector comprises twelve percent of the state's gross domestic product, ranking it in the top twenty percent of states for manufacturing. And whereas, in King County, the manufacturing sector employs nearly one-hundred-five-thousand, comprising eight-point-seven percent of the labor force in the county. And whereas, in Federal Way, a manufacturer such as the Espoo, Finland-based Valmet, is important to our economy as a leading global developer and supplier of services and technologies for the pulp, paper, and energy industries. And whereas, Valmet's services cover everything from maintenance outsourcing to mill and plant improvements and spare parts. Valmet's strong technology offering includes entire pulp mills, tissue, board, and paper production lines, as well as power plants for bioenergy production. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the undersigned city council members, do hereby recognize Valmet's important role in the local and state economy and thank them for being a valued member of the Federal Way community. And it's signed by the mayor and the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, the City of Federal Way and the Federal Way Chamber of Commerce. The general manager of the shop could not be here. She's in Pennsylvania. And the R&amp;D rep in the shop, and thank you for recognizing the manufacturer.
Well, thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Good evening. Thank you.
You too. Thank you for the work you do. Okay, to the podium, I would ask for the item C, the City Inclusion Resolution. Action is anticipated on this item. I would ask our Parks Director, John Hutton, and the Honorable Judge Dave Larson to come. And we'll have the reading of a proclamation, and then we'll seek to approve it. But before we have the presentation from Director Hutton and Judge Larson, I would ask our Councilmember Moore to read our proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Or resolution, I should say, for inclusion.
Whereas, the city's inclusion program began over twenty years ago to help people with disabilities and limited means to integrate socially and to provide recreation and volunteer opportunities to establish life skills and secure employment. And whereas, the city has partnered with Highline Community College, Federal Way School District, the Quanis, Federal Way, Vadas, and other local organizations to help achieve inclusion in the community. And whereas, the Federal Way Community Centers inclusion programs serve over two-hundred-and-fifty individuals each year. And whereas, the city council has shown commitment to the Federal Way inclusion programs at the FWCC, Federal Way Community Center, by awarding a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, which has helped keep the program successful when Highline Community College ended their relationship with Federal Way in 2012 due to the budget soarfalls. And whereas, the inclusion program at the Federal Way Community Center has grown from offering Special Olympics to several classes each day of the week, including fitness, cooking, sign language, and reading. The center also offers outings around the community, day trips and overnight trips throughout the western Washington. And whereas, the inclusion program has doubled the numbers of class offerings over the past seven years, and quarterly participation has quadrupled in that time. And whereas, Dumas-based Center, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works utilizes the service of the inclusion program through the various partnerships to provide employment opportunities and skills. And whereas, the city council has continuously shown an ongoing commitment to the Federal Way inclusion program at the Federal Way Community Center and at City Hall. Now therefore, the city council of the City of Federal Way resolves as follows. Section one, the city council commits to the City of Federal Way to the continued promotion of inclusion within the city at all types of levels, including opportunities at the community center and City Hall, to learn and explore opportunities for social growth and to provide employment opportunities through current and future partnerships with multiple agencies. Section two, the city will continue to explore the various options of creating workforce opportunities for individuals with disabilities and/or limited means through employment, contract services, and/or volunteering. Section three, severability. If any section, sentence, clause, or phrase of the resolution should be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by the Court of Competent Jurisdiction, such invalidity or unconstitutionality shall not affect the validity or constitutionality of any other section, sentence, clause, or phrase of the resolution. Section four, corrections. The city clerk and codifiers of this resolution are authorized to make necessary corrections to the resolution, including, but not limited to, the correction of scrivernier, clerical errors, reference, resolution numbering, sections, subsections, numbers, and any.
As they say in Olympia, last line.
Last line. Resolved by the city.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolved by the city council of the City of Federal Way, Washington, the seventh day of October 2014.
Very good. And we'll be voting on that in a few moments. And I'll recognize Councilmember Moore. We've got individuals from Trillium as well. Could you please join us, join us up there as well? And we also have Action Club members. Can I see the show of hands of the Action Club members? Well, we need you guys up here as well. We're gonna get a group picture, so come on up. Director Hutton? Ms. Hills, yes. You're part of the Action Club. John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and members of the city council. And boy, I'd like to say I'm really glad you got to read that, Councilmember Moore. My part is a lot easier. I'm here to talk to you about one of our most important program areas, and that's our inclusion program. And as Councilmember Moore read, we do amazing work with this population every day, and we are so proud of them, their achievements, and our staff's commitment along with the city council and the city. So, I'd like to say a few things about that. We have two dedicated professionals who work tirelessly on behalf of our inclusion program. One is Sharon Boyle. Sharon has been a Spirit Award winner here, been here for over twenty years, does amazing work with our Special Olympics program, and actually started our Friendship Theater program many, many years ago. That is a nationally recognized program. We're very proud of that program and all of her Special Olympics. And as Councilmember Moore eloquently pointed out, that population in our Special Olympics program has more than quadrupled over the last seven years. That's an amazing sports program, full of championships and great effort by all of our athletes, and we couldn't be more proud. And you recognized them recently at a council meeting, so thank you for that. Our second professional is Kevin Hutchinson, our inclusion coordinator. Does amazing work. He is here tonight with us. He is just something, someone that we are so proud of, a real jewel in our crown of Parks and Recreation. Could not be more proud of the work that Kevin does every single day. Does amazing work, and again, weekends, nights, all the time. Just very selfless individual. Does camping trips, increases our program each and every year. Does amazing work within a tight budget and is just a great professional. We're very fortunate to have him. He is here tonight if you have any questions further about the program that I'm gonna talk about. So, with that, I would like to introduce one other very, very important person in the inclusion area, and that is our very own Judge Larson, who works tirelessly with the Quanis Action Club. So, if Judge Larson could come up.
Thank you very much. I, about three and a half years ago, our Quanis Club sponsored the Action Club of Federal Way, and I agreed to be the advisor for that. And I was concerned that I wouldn't be accepted because, for a variety of reasons. But not only was I accepted, I have a lot of friends and a lot of new friends. And I want to introduce them. Cory, she's the new president of Action Club. We have Amy. Her brother is also a police officer in Federal Way, which some of, all, or some are, at some point, you all come and speak to Action Club and you all meet him. Heather, Katie, Jerry, Roger, Abraham, who reads book after book after book. Robert, Tracy, and Jenny. Did I miss anybody?
Yeah, Tracy.
No, I said Tracy. But it's a lot of fun. We run the meetings just like we run a Quanis meeting. They've done some things, and we've gone to Olympia. We've been on the House floor. They've actually sat in the dais of the Supreme Court, been in the robe room. We've done things in Federal Way. In fact, they originally did the petition that led to, and I would say the word rotary, club, doing a fantastic job of raising money for the park at Steel Lake. These guys were the ones that circulated the petition to hopefully get that going. They've done a number of other things. We did diapers and formula for the multi-service center last year, and more things to come. So, but it's just my honor and a privilege to be part of this. And Kevin is fantastic. And there's another person that's not here tonight, Sarah Montgomery, who's the person who acts on behalf of the city at the Action Club meetings. And if there's any questions about it, that's, that's great. And when Amy Jo or Ms. Biersall mentioned that to have me come here, I was humbled because I only do a small fraction of what a lot of other people do in this community. When it comes to this in my Quanis Club, our goal is to make, goal is to make REC Inc. Something everybody in this community knows about. And, and thank you to the council and to John Hutton and everybody else for actually taking the lead on making that a reality even without the Quanis. But this is a very important part of our community, so thank you very much.
Judge Larson, you're a very important part of our community. And I, you know, several of us on the dais, well, most of us have been speakers at the Action Club. And, you know, here it is on a week, on a weekday night, late at night, it's dark like this, and you go into the room over at the community center, and there's Judge Larson with the Action Club, with Kevin Hutchinson. And it's just really, you're an inspiration to us all, and as are you, all the Action Club members. Thank you so much. And it was with that spirit in mind that we started moving toward this idea of inclusion and leading by example. I really want to call out Councilmember Martin Moore, who introduced me to our Trillium representatives. And can you raise your hand back there? With the assistance of Councilmember Moore, and we went out and looked at a couple of job sites where people were getting placed out, out in the community for the job sites. And so, that, that has really led to this resolution coming for, before this body to lead by example and saying that we're going to make efforts, not just to do regular programs of inclusion, but to take it to the next level and encourage employment. When we have come to the Action Club, that's obviously something that, that the Action Club and the individuals with disabilities in this community are, you know, deeply concerned about, is having those opportunities and feeling like a place that they, that they belong and can contribute and can earn money and contribute back to this community. And what we want to do, and that's what our conversations with the Trillium representatives represented, is making sure that we can make that, we lead by example, and we bring these folks into the workforce in the Federal Way, you know, over time and with specific numbers. So, we are gonna want, we're gonna want a group picture, so maybe if I could have you guys. Just a moment. Our president of our club would like, is it, was it okay? Yes, of course. Yes, please. Cory says a few words.
On behalf of Action Club and others, thank you, city council.
Thank you so much. So, we're gonna do a big group picture, but we have a little bit of item, we gotta pass this first. And so, we've gotta do that. And Councilmember Moore, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I proudly make the motion to authorize the proposed resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have prepared a few remarks. This is a very important month. This month is where we recognize and bring awareness of National Disabilities Employment Month. This is a very important issue of mine. Having had countless conversations over the years with my mentors, Mark Malosha, and currently working with Representative Roger Freeman in Olympia, I began to realize that development disability programs are always the first to be on the chopping blocks of their state budget. Today, Mr. Mayor, we get to stand alongside people with development disabilities and say that we hear you loud and clear. Over my first year in office, I've learned that, from Action Club, that people with development disabilities want jobs. That's what I heard when I attended your meetings. I've also learned that they just want to have a sense of ownership and spending power, just like all Federal Wayans do and all Washingtonians. While this resolution is a big gigantic step forward, we can't just stop here. I encourage our mayor and his administration to work towards creating the hours necessary to hire people with disabilities that are graduating from the Federal Way School District. I'm proud of the work that we, as a city, have done to become inclusive of all individuals, not just in our workplace, but in our parks. With that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Thank you for your dedication to this issue. Councilmember Maloney and then Sephad Dawson.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Moore for bringing this up and for the group of Action, the members of Action Club for being here, and Judge Larson as well, and John Hutton as well. My background is intertwined with this kind of work, and I think it's a great move on the city's behalf. And I'm just really looking forward to seeing more people employed and becoming as independent as they can. Thank you.
Councilmember Sephad Dawson.
Thank you. I also want to resonate with Martin Moore said, and then Kelly. Thank you, Judge Larson, for the hard work that you do. And it's just really moving to see what's going on in our city. And I'm really proud to say that I'm happy to be part of this group, and I just want to say thank you. And congratulations to all of you for what you do in this committee.
Deputy Mayor Burr, thank you. Councilmember Sephad Dawson. Councilmember Burbage.
I'd like to express my personal appreciation also to the whole group up there, without naming any names. Although I have former neighbors standing right in the front and want to say hi to Amy. So, again, it's inspiring to have you come here, to know that this important work is going on and that we're working towards some important goals in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Selsky.
Yes, I, just like everybody else, we really appreciate all the hard work that Judge Larson and John and the whole group is doing. And to have this inclusion program in our city, I'm quite proud of that. So, thank you for all the work you're doing and all you members of the, of the group. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember DuKlo.
I just want to echo what everybody else has said. Thank you, and I want to thank you folks, I really do, for coming here tonight and talking to us and for what you're doing to help yourselves and to help others that have disabilities. So, thank you very much for being here.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to go to the Action Club and as a member of the Quanis Club, I thank the, I thank Judge Larson for his work. And Kevin is a new member of the Quanis Club, and I thank him for his work there. And I always learn something when I go, and I'm proud to call you my friends. So, thank you for coming tonight. to call you my friends, so thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely. Okay, so there's been a motion, there's been a second. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? The measure passes.
Yes!
Now, yeah, we want a big photo, let's have you guys come down here.
Did you want Trillium to say anything?
Oh, yes, Trillium.
They don't need to, okay.
Okay.
Everything's been said.
Should we all get down? You guys, we're going to come down there and be with, down on the, right down here with you, so come on down. Okay, let's everybody squeeze in, squeeze in. It's time to smile. Chairman Selsky.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. On this, at the September 16th council meeting, the council reappointed three experienced members of the Planning Commission, and they are Tom Medhurst, Hope Elder, and Wayne Carlson, for four-year terms as voting members. So, I see Hope is here. Hope, could you please make your way up to the podium? And I know Tom is not in town, and Wayne, I don't think Wayne is here either. Okay, so I'll go ahead and read the certificate. Certificate of Appointment certifying that Hope Elder, Wayne Carlson, and Tom Medhurst are hereby reappointed to serve as voting members of the Federal Way Planning Commission for a term to expire September 30th, 2018, dated this 7th day of October 2014, signed by the mayor and the city council.
All right, item E, certificates of reappointment, and appointment to the CDBG Loan Advisory Committee. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. At the September 16th city council meeting, council reappointed Kevin Dunn and appointed Ronald Chenoweth to the CDBG Loan Review Advisory Committee. If either of these two appointees is present this evening, I'd like to invite you to join me at the podium. I will read the certificates of appointment and then present them to you. I know Mr. Dunn wasn't able to be here, but, all right.
And then we also have, we'll have, the next, we also have certificates of appointment to the Human Services Commission, so you want to do those at the same time?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes. Certificate of Appointment, in accordance with Ordinance 12-725, the City of Federal Way Mayor and the City Council certifies Ronald Chenoweth is hereby appointed to serve as a voting member of the Federal Way CDBG Loan Review Advisory Committee for a term to expire August 31st of 2016, dated this 7th day of October 2014, by our mayor and all the seven council members. And if you can stay there for just a second, I'd like to ask if Mr. Gomez, Joseph Gomez is in the audience? Would you like to come up to the podium, please? At the September 16th city council meeting, the council appointed Joseph Gomez to the Human Services Commission, and I will read certificate. Certificate of Appointment, in accordance with Ordinance 96-281, the City of Federal Way Mayor and City Council certifies Joseph Gomez is hereby appointed to serve as a voting member of the Federal Way Human Services Commission for a term to expire January 31st, 2016, dated this 7th day of October 2014, signed by our mayor and seven council members. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor and the council, I appreciate, and I'm honored to serve for the city. I'm looking forward to it, and I appreciate the unanimous vote that was given to me on the September 16th meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to echo that and just say thank you for the appointment, and I look forward to the opportunity. Thanks.
All right, thank you both for serving. All right, now it's time, item G, for the Town Square Park Public Input and Process Timeline. John Hutton, our Parks Director, will give us, while he's making his way to the podium, as you all know, we opened our first ever downtown park, Town Square Park, and that was a great opening, and a great grand opening, but we're looking at Town Square Park 2.0, and about what happens as we move forward, and especially as it relates to the kind of a downtown that we want, and the kind of amenities that we want in that park. And with that, I will turn it over to Director Hutton.
Thank you again, Mayor Farrell, members of council. I would like to talk to you about what's going on at Town Square Park. As you know, we have had four tremendously successful events. The grand opening with over 1,000 people, two movie nights that averaged 1,000 people or more, and a great little three-on-three basketball tournament, that was a tremendous success. So, we know that people have found Town Square Park and love it for the events that we've run there, and are starting to enjoy it more and more every day. But at a recent meeting, it was requested that we pause a little bit and study further the future potential amenities that have been identified through this process, some of which include trees, a children's play area, potential water feature, a shelter, there's lots of things being studied. With that, we took that direction, and we have retained Nacano and Associates to begin the master planning process, and so they are developing a master plan that will include a great deal of public input, public process will be heavily involved in this process, beginning in fact on your next council meeting, the 21st. They will be here at 6 o'clock to do an open house, public meeting that anybody can attend, and help us provide, or help provide us and Nacano additional ideas. In addition to that, we've put out a survey that has had a tremendous amount of response already, 421 responses in less than five days. So, we're getting tremendous response to the survey. That information will be given to Nacano, so they can do their work, and you will be involved, and the public will be heavily involved in the studying of what will continue to be a great, great downtown park. Our own Town Square Park, we, it's our desire to have the very best Town Square Park absolutely possible for Federal Way. So, with that, there will be a series of meetings that kick off on the 21st. There'll be a lot of notification. We will probably do some of those meetings offsite, away from City Hall, most likely at the Federal Way Community Center, potentially at a school, and potentially at a public library. So, we will take City Hall to the people as well, involved in this public process, continue to take advice and information and input from the public, and provide that to Nacano, and then they will get back to you in May for your review of a draft master plan in May of 15. So, it's a process, and it will be a good process, and the end result will be the very best Town Square Park possible. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And I would note that one of the things that we talked about, management team today, is the 400 responses that we've received so far, and the many, many responses we're going to receive, we're going to show, make sure the council receives this as well. And, actually, Councilmember Duclair, I had a question.
Yeah, I just, clarification, because I've asked this before, I asked it in committee. When we talk about the Town Square Park, are we talking the four acres of the land, or are we talking two acres of the land?
It's funny you mention that.
I'd just like an answer to it, that's all. I can go either way.
You know, it could, and here's, here's the, here's the quick answer. We have to be flexible to plan for both, but the meeting that we had earlier, that we had yesterday, included an architect for a possible developer, that we were working on the, with the assumption that something on the west side of that property, assume something like that goes in, then what does the east side of the park look like? And that, those are the set of assumptions that Nacano is working with. I think that we had, but the other thing is, we, we don't want to be just waiting for that to occur. We want to make sure, and that's actually, I just want to say, that came out of the Parks Committee chaired by Chairman Honda, and yourself, and Councilmember Moore, the idea was, instead of just throwing amenities there, we have to have a long-term plan. And so, what Nacano, what Ida, our, Ida Otison, our architect, is actually looking at, is are the fundamentals of a plan that is flexible enough to, you know, wait for the development to occur, or while it's occurring at the development stages, but when it occurs, we don't have to change or move, or we don't waste $1 of taxpayer money. The amenities we put there, stay there, and that's what we're looking at.
And that's what I just want a direction on, because we were originally talking about putting things on, letting people use it, and then taking them off, and that's what I objected to.
Right.
And that's why I wanted some kind of answer on this part, and thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, and it was great that we've had, we actually had that architect from that potential, from that possible developer in the room with us. We had a satellite map up, and we were actually drawing, you know, different kinds of scenarios, and what it, you know, we had the previous schematic that had that Town Square Park envisioned, and so that, that remains in place. And what we're talking about is a water feature, a splash park, shelter and shade, and trees, and the kind of Town Square Park that we will be truly proud of, you know, 20, 40, 50 years from now. That'll be an integral part of our downtown. And so, that's what we're working on, and you know, Ida, our architect, reached out, and we were at first, you know, we were looking at getting something by the end of, you know, by December, and she just, and we were in conversations with her, and, and talking about this process, and we just want to make sure that, that whatever we put forth, you know, government works best when it's, when it's governed by the voice of the people, and we want to make sure that this Town Square is the people's park. And so, we're going to make sure that there's no stone, no stone unturned in regard to making sure that that, that the public is engaged. In fact, tomorrow, October 8th, we send out, we're going to send out 35,000 newsletters out to every residence in this city. On page three of that newsletter is that, is that survey that we're going to ask people to go to, to give their input on the direction of Town Square Park. So, I think Ida and her, and her folks at Nacano are going to have a few more than 400 responses to go through, but when we get all done with this process, it'll truly be the people's park. And that, that's our, that's our goal. And so, we've got our, the chair of our Parks Commission that's, that's present, he's signed up to speak on the park a little bit later, and the idea is to really energize the community in this process. So, to the, to the council, and to the committee members that, that led in this effort, thank you very much. With that, councilmembers, do you have any, Councilmember Seph Adosson?
Just a quick question about the newsletter you just talked about.
Yes.
Does it go to multifamily apartment buildings?
It goes to every residence in the City of Federal Way.
Okay.
35,000, I'm told it's 35,000 residents. Every, every resident, that's every apartment, that's every house, registered, not registered, devoted, just every house, every home.
Every house.
Every address.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're right, I know, I'm saying, every address in the City of Federal Way will get it. Now, that's inclusion. All right. All right. Anybody else have any, council? John, anything else?
Yes, I have put up a slide, and I would love to hear directly from you, if you'd like to speak to me directly, or my contact information is on there, and also the link to the survey is also on that slide, so if for some reason you can't find the survey somewhere else, it should be on that newsletter at your house, but if not, it's right there for you. Please contact me directly, or access the survey. Let your voice be heard, we want to hear your input, so thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now, moving on to the mayor's emerging issues and report. Now, I don't know, you know, some of you may not be here all that regularly, some of you are. Is there something in this room that's a little bit different? We've got our historic painting from Brook Lake, just a, that we hung on the wall earlier today. We have been, this, this portrait was recovered from a very historic piece of property, probably where, in fact, it was a piece of art on the back of, on the back in the Brook Lake Community Center, that when you turned the picture around, it said where Federal Way began. And the Brook Lake Community Center is down at 356th and Pacific Highway. It was the site of the first public library. Brook Lake was the first source of potable water in this city. Names long since lost to history were on the back of this picture. And so, when we were, we were donated this historic property, and I was working with Jerry Knudsen, who is currently the president of the Historical Society, and the last remaining board member, if you will, of the Brook Lake Community Center, a man named Wendell Keeker, who's truly a kind of walking history in Federal Way. Wendell had the remaining sort of share of the Brook Lake Community Center, and this building, the building on which this portrait came from, was built in the 1920s, and it alternatively been a restaurant, an inn, a speakeasy during prohibition, some other uses, and we'll just leave that there, we'll float that out there. And then, most recently, it's been a community center. And in fact, the book, that the history, that the, that the Historical Society of Federal Way put out about Federal Way, has a, has a group called the Brook Lake Hillbillies, and that picture of the Brook Lake Hillbillies for the, for the, for the Book of Federal Way, the history of our community, was taken outside where this, so here's the, here's the story in this picture. As we were negotiating the gift of the Brook Lake Community Center, and we were, they were going to give us this multi-hundred thousand dollar property that's just like the last piece of the puzzle for the High Elvis watershed, Wendell leaned across the table and he goes, "By the way, there's a picture buried in the walls of that historic, of that historic building, and when you get it, you'll probably want to open up the walls and take it off." I last saw it about 30 or 40 years ago, when I was much, when I was a much younger man, and he says, "You're going to want to saw it out. It's in the main area, the main meeting room." So, on the very first day that we had the ability, myself and about eight or 10 people with Parks and Public Works went down there to the site, and they sawed back the, the wood and the, what's that?
Drywall.
Drywall, thank you, I couldn't think of the word. They sawed back the drywall, and that's what they found behind the walls. Now, that picture is dated from 1944, painting is dated from 1944, but we did not know who this individual was. But guess what, ladies and gentlemen? We do now. And the man at the, the man at the podium here, Mr. Dick Castor with the Historical Society, is going to tell us. Now, I want to, before we get any further, we have spent months debating exactly what to do with this picture, or this painting, because it was, what we were debating is the, the high cost of cleaning or refurbishing it versus putting a frame around it and protecting it in other ways. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Ken Miller, who, at the time of this, has been shepherding this painting and this process. That's a brand-new frame that we got, and how did we, how did we come in possession of the frame, Ken?
We, we got the frame from Michael's.
For a, a little bit of, we used some coupons and got-
They had a 60% and a 10% off.
Now, that's frugal government, right there. So, good job, Ken. Because to refurbish the painting was going to cost $20,000. And we just, we could not in good conscience pay twenty thousand dollars, not for, and I'll, we'll tell, Dick's going to explain a little bit about what it was originally donated to the community center for. But the key thing is, we want to protect it from UV light and we want to protect, we want to put something on top of it. So we're going to go, we're going to now go back to Aaron Brothers and do a sixty and another ten percent. On Monday, we're going to take this down and on Monday, we're going to deliver it to Aaron Brothers and put some museum glass or acrylic on it to protect it. But right next to it is going to be the information that you're about to hear. So with that big lead-up, Mr. Castor, the form is yours.
Okay, thank you. As you can see, the scene is a logging scene and in front are two oxen helping the logger pull some logs out of the woods. And behind him is a train taking logs out of the woods. And was mentioned, across the bottom is the title, Puget Sound Basin, eighteen ninety. And on the lower right-hand corner is the artist's name Franklin and then a dash nineteen forty-four, evidently the year he painted it. And in the F of the Franklin, there's, are some initials that are very difficult to read. So what Mayor Pharoah has asked the Historical Society to do is that really a historical artifact, something that the city should be preserving. And what else do we know about the artist besides that he, that last name was Franklin? And then also, it's kind of an unusual scene, so that it depict maybe a real scene. What's it actually depicting? So first of all, is it an artifact? I started out by contacting the Tacoma Art Museum, the Museum of History and Industry in, in Seattle, who has a lot of historical paintings. And I contacted a man named David Martin, who is an independent consultant and is usually considered the expert on historical paintings in the Northwest. Unfortunately, none of those three could offer any help in identifying the, either the painting or the artist. Sometimes you have to look for things that you're trying to find out, other times they just kind of fall into place. I'm in the process of writing a detailed history of the Brook Lake Community Center, which will go into all the things that Mayor Pharoah was mentioning. And I happen to be reading in December nineteen forty-four minutes of the Board of Trustees of the Brook Lake Community Center. And in there, there was a one-line statement that indicated they would like to thank John Franklin Senior for donating a picture. So that's apparently the picture we're looking at. The dates agree, nineteen forty-four on the painting, nineteen forty-four in the minutes of the Board of Trustees. What they wanted to thank, how they wanted to thank Franklin for donating the picture was to give him ten shares of stock in the Brook Lake Community Center. Now, at that time, a share of stock in the Brook Lake Community Center had a par value of one dollar. So that means Brook Lake Community Center gave ten dollars to Franklin for the painting.
And now it's priceless.
Now it's priceless. So with that lead, it does definitely, I think, is considered an artifact. It's seventy years old, it's hung in a historical facility, and so definitely it's something Federway should preserve as an artifact and has great historical value. What about the artist? Do we know anything more about the artist than just his last name was Franklin? Well, with that lead of John Franklin Senior was the one that donated it by using census records, death records, ancestry dot com, even using John Franklin's son's draft card registration, we were able to put together a fairly good history of John Franklin. We now know that his full name was John Benjamin Franklin Senior. He was born in New York State in eighteen sixty-five and he moved to Pierce County around nineteen hundred, probably in the Sumner area. And he was a farmer and a teacher. In around nineteen twenty, he moved to the Harding area. Now, the Harding area is named after the Harding Grade School, which operated from nineteen twenty to nineteen twenty-nine. The building is still there, it's used as a church. It's down towards Todd Beamer High School. So roughly speaking, the Harding area is maybe a half-mile radius around Todd Beamer High School. So that means he was living in the area. And he lived there until his death in nineteen fifty-two. He had a son named John Irving Franklin, so that meant that the senior also matched. He had a son named John Junior. So all the evidence is pointing to him. John Benjamin Franklin Senior. But I mentioned in the letter F in the signature, there's some initials. And if you blow that up, put it on a computer screen, play around with the contrast, you see those initials are J B. So John Benjamin Franklin Senior. So we're starting to learn quite a bit about who the artist was. The quality of the painting would indicate that he did other paintings, but at this point, we don't know anything about any other paintings. Does it depict a true scene? Well, obviously, John Franklin Senior was not there in eighteen ninety, but he did live in the general area for about fifty years. He lived in the Harding area for the last thirty years of his life. So he probably knew a lot of loggers, talked to a lot of loggers, and of course, there was a lot of logging in Federway in the early nineteen hundreds up till the nineteen thirties. So he's probably had observed loggers, talked to loggers, knew a lot about logging. Also, what many of you here in this room may not know, we do know that there were at least three logging railroads in Federway in the early nineteen hundreds. So while the picture probably doesn't represent an actual scene where you would have seen that, what's depicted there, it's probably a pretty realistic scene of the transition period when animals were being phased out of being used for logging and the trains were starting to take over. When I look at the picture, that's what I see. I see that gentleman in front with his oxen wondering what modern technology is doing to him. So I, I think from that standpoint, it probably is a good representation of what was going on in the eighteen nineties in logging in the Federway area. So what we hope to do is continue the research and find out more about the artist, the painting. One of the things I want to do, that, the train that's in there, I wanted to see what I can find out about that engine is what it represents as far as the timing on it and the years that particular engine was in use. So it is a great discovery and well worth preserving. And as Mayor Pharoah mentioned, we will write some words to put a plaque up there.
Thank you, Mr. Castor. We appreciate it. And we've got, Mr. Castor's going to be speaking at the Brook Lake Community Center, that's on October eighteenth, is that right? On a Saturday, October eighteenth, at the Brook Lake Community Center. And he's going to be giving quite a presentation on that center, so.
Yes, since you gave me a plug, I'll give you one.
All right.
I'll be talking about the history of Brook Lake Community Center from eighteen fifty up till the present. And then Mayor Pharoah is going to talk about the present and the future of the Brook Lake Community Center.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Castor, thank you. All right. So now moving on, we had, I wanted to let everybody know, we had our Mirror Lake Neighborhood Connection meeting and we had a great, probably close to about, almost a hundred people, just shy of a hundred, and it was a, a good meeting. We had city staff there, the directors, many of the council members, and it was a great opportunity to connect with the public there. And we've got another one coming up at Wildwood Elementary in just two weeks, October twenty-third. So that's Wildwood Elementary on October twenty-third. That is a Thursday, we like to do our meetings on Thursday for reaching out to the community. So we invite you to come. Those meetings start at six PM. Let's see here, we had the, we've got the upcoming Veterans Day event. Where's John Hutton? Well, he's making his way over to tell you about, we've got, talk about the history of Federway. We've got something that is going to be the future and will make history, and that's what we're doing on November eleventh at eleven AM. And for the history buffs, they, they know that the Great War ended at eleven AM and eleven eleven. So, John, what's happening on that day?
We have a tremendous event, one of the more important events we've ever done in Federway, in my opinion. We had that planned for Veterans Day, as Mayor Pharoah mentioned. It is at, on eleven eleven at eleven, so pretty easy to remember. It will be in the Sears parking lot nearest three twentieth Street, so almost in the Chase Bank Lot. So it, we are raising the flag that day, a twelve-by-eighteen-foot flag, which is a huge flag on a sixty-foot flagpole. It is going to make a tremendous statement. In addition to the flag raising and the flags that will lead all the way from I five to, to the location of the, of the flagpole, which is in the island just east of Highway ninety-nine on three twentieth. We are also having some other activities to commemorate a very important day.
So I don't know if you caught that, the sixty-foot flagpole is going to be in the middle of three twentieth, in an island. So it's going to be, it's going to quite, a cut, quite an imposing figure.
It will be a, quite a statement and will be very beautiful. During the planning process for the Veterans Event, the Veterans Day Event, Councilmember Bob Selsky has been a great help. I'd like to thank him for his help already. Judge Dave Larson has been a big help. Bob Kellogg has been a big help. And we are working with Rich Garmong, we're reaching out to Rich Garmong, who is a local Federway High School grad, a veteran, a combat veteran in Vietnam, and works with Veterans Affairs here, and hopefully he will be able to agree to be our speaker that day. And so we're also working with the Joint Base Lewis McCord to hopefully bring to us some equipment. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag in case I can't deliver. There will be music there and hopefully that will be in the form of, hopefully, a local high school band in addition to a military band, if we can get that confirmed. So this is an incredibly important event. This is an event that will go down in history. I spoke with Mr. Pharoah today, Mayor Pharoah today. This is a picture that might last for a hundred years of the people that are there at that event. This is a big visual statement in our downtown core and a very important thing. In addition to the flags, in addition to the, the Veterans Day ceremony, we are also renaming, ceremonially renaming three twentieth Street Veterans Way. And that will take place from the city limits at Warehouser Way all the way to Eleventh Avenue. So this is a big, exciting event and it's multifaceted, it's very important, and I couldn't be more honored to be the lead on this event. So we are inviting the entire public, as well as all the elected officials in the area and every veterans group. So I'll be leaving no stone unturned to make sure every veteran in the area gets an invite, a personal invite, and no one is left out. This is a truly great event and everyone will want to be there to thank and celebrate the men and women who have sacrificed so much for our great country. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Councilmember Honda.
I'd like to, to say thank you and I am very excited about this. But I also want to let the public know that following this, there is a Veterans Day program that the Qantas Club and the Federway Historical Society put together and perhaps the President of the Federway Historical Society could tell us more details of that so we could connect both events.
Diana, would you please approach the podium real quick? Yeah, because it's very important. We're going to go from this event to that event as well.
Well, thank you for the lead-in. I'm not the president, but I'm the president-elect, perhaps, after our annual meeting on October eighteenth at twelve o'clock at Brook Lake. Back to the November eleventh from, oh gosh, I keep forgetting this time, it's one o'clock to two-thirty at Todd Beamer High School is Veterans Observance and it's entitled Honoring Our Own, where we honor the past and present veterans in Federway there. We have a major speaker, it's, I don't know his name off the top of my head, but if I remember right, he was involved with Black Hawk Down. So it's something you do not want to miss and of course, there's other activities there for all ages, all families, and of course, as many veterans as possible. So thank you very much and I really, really appreciate what the city is doing for our veterans in a visual and respectful way. It's been a long time coming, but I, I thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, for, for doing this. It's, I know it's going to mean a lot to many people when, like, like Jim said, a hundred years from now. So it is also the hundred-and-twenty-fifth birthday, or not birthday, but anniversary of the statehood of the state of Washington. So I'll keep that in mind also on November eleventh. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John, thank you very much. We look for, we'll, we'll be there at the, the Raising the Flag Event. So the, the movie nights and what we've had so far were just warm-up events for this, for this big one. So as I said, we've got the newsletter that's going out, it's got all kinds of news, so be watching for that. We'd love to hear back from you, it has our contact information. And we, Arts Alive Program, the City Hall Juryed Art Show and Reception, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. This is an annual program that the Federway Arts Commission puts on. If you notice the hallway behind us, there is some new artwork hanging and this is a juried art show. We have three prizes. There are two winners already chosen, the judges' award and the commissioners' award. But the people of Federway have a vote too, and so there's a People's Choice Award. And I would encourage you sometime before early December to take a walk down the hall and look at the art and vote for your favorite piece of artwork and put it in the ballot box. And in January, we will know who the People's Choice Award winner is. But on, at the next council meeting, there'll be a reception in the room next door to honor the artists and their families and meet the art commissioners. So I would encourage you all to come. And I believe that starts around six-thirty.
All right, thank you. All right, and then I just have a, a quick, a quick bit of news. Ken Miller, a twenty-four-year employee, is in the back of the room. He served twenty-four years with the City of Federway, was Deputy Parks, excuse me, Deputy Public Works Director. He served earlier this year helping us shepherdize our Town Square Park into existence as the interim Parks Director and then now is the PAC Director, has accepted a position with Lake Haven. Lake Haven got him from us and he's going to be a manager there. Ken's last day is this Friday, but he's in the back of the room. Let's give him a big Federway thank you. Ken, why don't you come up and, why don't you come up and say a few words?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, may I, may I say a few words?
Yes, please.
Thank you, we talked about this, I thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Before Mr. Miller speaks, we made, we made, we made a pledge, neither one of us would cry.
That's going to be tough to keep.
I know. Well, I'm going to do the work to make you do it, okay? I just want to say that I've worked with Ken for three, four years now, Ken? I forget. When I first started going to the Regional Policy Committee, I would drive up to Seattle all by myself and I'd find a parking place and I'd go to the meetings. Then I discovered Ken was interested in going. What I had observed while I was there my first year was there were other city council members there and they had staff with them who would advise them on issues and the staff would all meet together and talk about things. So Ken volunteered to join me and I said, "This is great, I get to ride in a city car, he drives, I don't have to pay parking." And I can just relax on the way. The wonderful thing about it is, we would talk about the agenda on the way up, but we also talked about each other and got to know each other and, and became sort of friends as much as, as we, as you could. And he always represented us very, very well. He worked with the other city staff that were there and suggested ideas and anytime I'd forget something, Ken would be right there to remind me or to give me what I needed. And he was just, just a wonderful thing. And it was just, it was really, really nice to have somebody to go up there with. And Ken, I know, Lake Haven is going to be very happy with you. They're getting, they're getting a wonderful, wonderful employee, a very talented individual who has many, many different, different, trying to think of it, different things in life that he likes to do, not, not outside of the workplace. And I'm not going to tell you what they are, it's between... And I'm not going to tell you what they are. It's between us. But I'm really, really going to miss you. I want to thank you for all those years that you, that you went with me to the RPC and for driving. That was wonderful. Thanks so much, Ken.
Well, thanks, Councilmember DuKloz, for the kind comments and the driving lessons as well. I think every once in a while, I thought I was going to get that steering wheel ripped out from my hands, but I did learn a lot of, a lot of skills of how to drive in Seattle after, after you taught me how to do that. But I won't, I won't, I see the police are still here, so I won't let, let on what those special skills were. I'd just like to thank the Mayor, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor and the council members, and especially the staff. I miss you all, and thank you.
Councilmember Selsky.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Ken, I'd like to just say a couple of words as well. As over the past three years, as Chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee, it's been a real pleasure working with you in different projects that you've, you've brought before the committee, and you're always well-prepared and professional, and I really appreciate that aspect of the work you did for, for the city. Secondly, going to Lake Haven, I still feel a close connection with you. I think everybody in this room here, or most people in this room, are customers of Lake Haven, so we will continue to expect your excellent service to, to the community in your new capacity at Lake Haven. So, good luck, and I'm sure you're going to do great things. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to take the time to recognize and thank Ken Miller for all your efforts. One of the things I appreciate about Ken is the fact that you're so down-to-earth, and it's really easy for myself, and I'm sure I can speak for others, to build a relationship with you. And just, I know that while we're talking and sharing memories, I'll share mine, and that's just in a short bit of time that I was on the council. You took me up to the proposed Korean Garden site, and just really appreciate how thoughtful we, you, how thoughtful you were with that whole process and sharing every little detail about the proposed area and just answering all my questions. And again, like Councilmember DuKloz said, it's, you know, we've had a nice conversation. I felt like I, it just, it was a great, it was a great time. So, I think Lake Haven Utilities District is very lucky to have an individual like you, and just want to say thank you for, for the service they gave to the city, and thanks for the opportunity to work with you.
Deputy Mayor, thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Thank you. I want to express my appreciation also to Ken Miller for your various roles in, in serving the city over so many years. Very much appreciated. But in particular, I would like to mention your staffing of the city's relationship with the Ecosystem Coordination Board for the Puget Sound Partnership, and your work with that when I was a representative of the Association of Washington Cities on that, that board. You were very much appreciated for your assistance, both to me and to the board as a whole. So, thank you very much, and I wish you all the best with Lake Haven, and as Councilmember Selsky said, you're not far away. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And Council, and Ken, just so you know, I, you know, we, we had a lot of fun putting in that town square park, and, you know, Ken made sure it got in on time, under budget, and it was really a lot of fun. One of the things that Ken found out about me in this process is that I'm a big Will Farrell fan, and there was this, there's this famous skit of him called Cowbell, and, you know, "Got to have more cowbell." It's a, it's a long story. Go, go Google it. But, but anyway, as Ken, as Ken was putting together the town square park, I kept saying, "I need more color." And ironically, we had all kinds of funky names for the colors of the swirls, and one of them was paprika. And I guess, "I gotta have more paprika." And, and that was sort of our inside joke. We were all watching the old Will Farrell cowbell skit, and, and it was all about, "We gotta have more color at this park, and it gotta have more, more splash and more swirl," and that's exactly what he did. Ken has added more splash and more swirl, not just in that park, but throughout this community. So, on behalf of the people of this community, Ken, thank you. All right. So, now, moving on to the most important part of the evening, citizen comment. Our first is Mark Kopeng, and then followed by Betty Taylor, and then Jenny Hills and Tracy Hills. So, Mr. Kopeng. If anybody has any comments, please submit a sheet.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. As the Chairman of the Parks Commission, you would think I obviously have a, a real passion for the parks. And, you know, I began my tenure on, on the Parks Commission really looking for just an opportunity to serve the City of Federal Way. But as I've become more entrenched in, in the understanding of the, the value of the parks, I really look at the parks as a treasure in our community and, and really something that every member of our community, regardless of their economic status, race, religion, can participate in. And I think that's something that really speaks to our values as a city. And as I look at the, as I looked at the town square park, and it's, it's kind of, it's evolved in my, in my own understanding. I originally looked at that four-acre site as something we really needed to redevelop commercially, have, you know, walking, walking downtown with businesses, and, and then the proposal was made to kind of cut it in half and have part be park and part be commercially developed. And again, I think that's still a very active consideration. Another option has been to make the entire four acres a park. And there's one thing I've learned in life is that you don't get what you don't ask for. And as I've looked at the different, different ideas, I really think that having the full four acres developed as a park is really, it's a wonderful opportunity for us as a city to speak to what we value. We value community. It would be a great bridge between the beautiful PAC that we're going to be building and the economic development that's already there in the area, the parking lot that's adjacent to the property, and whatever else is developed there in that area. So, really, rather than having development that would serve as a, a wall to separate that other development from the park itself, actually have the park remain open and accessible. I think that the value that we would see in that is that we really would have a destination, an oasis in, in the midst of a lot of development that is viable and important, but something that we can look back at, look back on in 10 years and realize was really worth the, the leadership risk that was entailed in making it a reality. So, as a, as a council, I hope that you will at least very seriously consider using that, utilizing that full four acres as a park and making a place for our kids and future generations to be able to enjoy in the midst of all the development that we know is going to occur in downtown Federal Way. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Betty Taylor.
Good evening, councilmembers and citizens. My name is Betty Taylor. I, I knew about the meeting at 6:15, and I purpose in my heart to be here. As I, as I walk into the, the room, I seen the display of the PAC in the middle of the floor. And so, as I walked up to the display, I've seen a bunch of people around the display, and they were looking, and, and, you know, everyone had their own ideals on how it looked. And then someone turned to me and asked me, they said, "Well, what do you think of it, think of it?" And so, I, I looked at that person, and I said, "You know, I really don't like it." And so, they asked me why, and I said, "Because." I said, "All right, so 700 seats, 700 seats, seating for 700 only." And then I thought about the people that would not have a seat. I thought about the different functions that would be, would, what would draw people to the City of Federal Way. And so, I'm like, "Okay, well, what if there's a function going on, and then there's only 700-seat capacity? Well, then, what if there's 900 people that want to fit into the building, but then the, the extra 200, there's no building, there's no place for them to sit?" So, I'm thinking about, I, I don't know, you know, I, I know a lot of thought has gone into this, but I'm like, "Did they really think?" We have a city of 900, 90,000 people, and we hope to have a city of 100,000 people. I would like to see that number changed from 90,000 to 100,000. Maybe we can fit 1,000 or 2,000 people in the PAC in, in that building. I mean, because I, I feel like if we're going to do something, let us include everyone. We're talking, you know, I heard a lot of talk about inclusion, inclusion, and that, that's really important for this city. So, in order for us to grow as a city, I think we need to think big as a city. And I think that 700 seats in the Performing Arts Center is not good thought. I, I don't, I can't, to me, we're going to miss out something. And so, I'm thinking, okay, and about, so say the PAC is built, 700 seats, okay, and then what if more than 700 want to come to sit? Well, what are they going to do then? Are they going to rebuild the van, the PAC? Or are they going to say, "Okay, let's go back to the drawing board. I think we made a mistake. Let's do it over." We don't want to do it over. If we're going to do some, why don't we just do it right the first time, so we don't have to come back a second time scratching our heads, wondering, "Where did we go wrong?" So, and we want to benefit the city. We want to be inclusive, include everybody, because I think that the way it is right now, somebody's going to get left behind.
All right. Thank you, Betty. All right, Jenny Hills, and then Tracy Hills.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Hills, and I've lived here in Federal Way for a long time. I think that we should start a program with the grocery stores to help people with disabilities and their families, including the kids, to have groceries every week besides going to the multi-service center to get free food and stuff. If there was like a voucher program or something started, that would help. I have been thinking about this for the last month, and I feel that this needs to be addressed directly to any grocery store, and maybe even Costco and Sam's Club would donate some money or something to help the people with disabilities. I've struggled for the last 10 months with finances, and it's very, very hard because I've been unemployed for 12 and a half years, which is a sad thing because I have a five-year-old child in school all day. And to me, it just, I just feel that this needs to be addressed to anybody that's willing to step up and help us try to get this started, so that way all of us can continue to live. I've been at Waterbury Park since June 10th, 2001, and there's been a lot of neighbor-to-neighbor fights and stuff. The cops have been called, or people have been threatening to call the cops, and I feel that this also needs to be addressed. I have an ex-neighbor and her daughter that have lived at the apartment for six and a half years. I've lived there for 14. And to me, I want to rename me and her friend, but, you know, it just feels like sometimes I want to give up and call it quits, but that is not an excuse. I feel that this needs to be addressed. I think that we need to get into these neighborhoods and apartments and do something to focus on neighbor-to-neighbor conflicts. I've been watching some of the, the meetings from the schools and some of the things that you have said, Mr. Mayor, about the conflicts about that. I feel that if the grocery stores and we all just got into a situation where we could all expand Federal Way and come together as Federal Way and figure out what we can do to help the people with disabilities, that would be a good thing. I also want to announce that my husband got a second job, and he is working, and I'm very proud of him. So, I just wanted to let you all know that I feel that this needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Tracy Hills, and then Karen Russell.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. First thing I'd like to say is I'd like you guys to keep the four acres or the two acres, whatever it is. I probably won't be able to make your meeting on the 21st, so I'd just like to comment on that. And also say that I'm sorry for what I said about a month ago, about $1,000. I overspoke, and it's actually $5, so thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Tracy. Okay, and Karen Russell. Hi, Karen.
Hello, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, and also Federal Way city staff. I want to thank you all on behalf of the management, the staff, and most importantly, the over 13,000 clients of Federal Way Public Health Clinic that are served. Thank you for your funding, for your leadership, for your support to keep our clinic open. We really appreciate that. And also, more importantly, for your leadership in working with public health, with King County, with the surrounding cities, with our labor partners, to look at a long-term funding solution for a better way to fund public health. We've got Federal Way open. We're working very hard to keep Auburn open, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of everyone.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And one of the things that was, that was really gratifying is we had over 13, we have 13,700 patients at the Federal Way Clinic. And I want to say once again, thank you to the entire council for their support of our work with the county executive. For $221,000, we not only got the clinic to stay open one year, which was, represented 30% of our share, but we got a buy-one-get-one-free because the county executive in his budget said, "You do the first year, we'll make it two years." So, he actually doubled the ability of us to keep our clinic open for the next two years while we work for that long-term solution. So, that's absolutely fantastic. Chief, are you going to say something?
I was going to say that Executive Constantine is going to be here on Friday, October 17th, at noon at the health clinic to recognize the, keeping the Federal Way Clinic open, the contribution that was made by the employees to make this happen, and also the partnership that's been created with Federal Way to keep our clinic open. So, we're very excited about it, and we have a great deal of work to do to find partnerships over the next two years to ensure that the sustainability of these services for, across the county. So, it's great work.
Very good. Councilmember Maloney, where are you going to say?
I just wanted to also recognize and commend the public health nurses and staff for taking the pay cut in order to, that contributed to the success of keeping the clinic open. So, thanks.
And I, I'm sorry, I am the manager of both the Auburn and the Federal Way Clinic, so I just have appreciated so much working with you all, with our citizens, the staff, and look forward to continue working closely. We've still got a lot of work to do, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And actually, what I'm looking for, I want to say thank you to the council. I did not have an opportunity. With the Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry, many of our, of our councilmembers here were present at four or five local grocery stores in town, and I was actually just looking for those totals. Is Jerry Lynn, or actually, we've got our, I'm looking for that, for those numbers. Yeah, and I don't see it. Yeah, it was 1,400 pounds of food. I'm sorry. Yeah, so. Yeah, it was great. So, I'm, but you know, and Mark, thank you very much for that. I just want to say thank you to the council. It was 1,400 pounds of food, $300, several gift cards for non-perishable food and other items that really helped the hungry. So, thank you very much for that. It was a, a great success. Okay, we are now at the consent agenda, items A through F. Deputy Mayor Burbidge, is there a, is there a motion?
There is. I move approval of items A through F on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion for items A through F? And I should read them. Item A, the minutes of September 16th, 2014, regular and special meeting. Item B, the vouchers. C, monthly financial report from August of 2014. D, resolution, solid waste and recycling, 2015-17 grant approval. Item E, Toys R Us Building Demolition Project, final project acceptance. And item F, Town Square Park Construction Project, final project acceptance. All right. Seeing as there is no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All the matters, all the matters pass. Now, we are on to council business, and this is the opportunity for the presentation of the Mayor's Budget, my budget, for 2015-2016. I've asked our Finance Director, Dei Aruwalu, to be ready at the podium as I go through this. I do want to let you know that the budget document, which is nearly as, as thick as almost a telephone book about what we're book, about what we're doing in regard to what we're planning to do, or proposing to do in our budget for the next two years, this is a biennial budget, and actually, on the cover, as we've been talking about the Brooklake property, we put the historic Brooklake property on the cover of our budget document. So, with that, let's go ahead and get started. I wanna say that, at the very end of this presentation, this is a broad overview of my proposed budget to the council. This will go through a number of study sessions that we'll have the dates for at the end. It'll talk about our general overview and philosophy with regard to the budget, and key highlights in the individual departments. But I do wanna make sure I state very clearly that we're not going to get into, into the weeds, if you will, or into the details of each department, because we are going to have study sessions where we go into line by line by line of each department, and we're gonna have two or three special study sessions culminating eventually in, we'll seek final approval of the budget slated for December second, the first council meeting in December. So, this is the beginning of that process, where I set forth what our priorities are. And so, before we get started, I'd like to say thank you very much for Ade and his staff for helping us move forward with this budget document. Okay, so let's talk about the budget vision. The first thing is, in any government, and especially city government, our first priority is create safe neighborhoods and vibrant business centers. We wanna support cultural diversity and maintain attractive parks for residents and their These are the budget principles of which we are moving forward on. Improve service delivery, we're going to have a conservative approach, and we do have a conservative approach in this document. No new taxes that would, is generated from this budget document. Strategic investments, and we're to move Federal Way forward, and also improve transparency and clarity in regard to how we manage the internal monies. And, you know, this is a large budget, so it's about forty-three, forty-four million dollars operating per year, and that doesn't count capital expenses. Fiscal challenges, and, you know, I would say that if you have an opportunity, there's an executive summary, but you can get a copy of this, and we have some executive summaries, and there are copies of this PowerPoint at the desk back there. Obviously, improve labor market and labor costs, limited growth in tax revenues, about just what's available to the city in order to raise money, reduced workforce here at the city, and we'll talk about what the past six years has meant to the workforce here at the City of Federal Way. Health insurance costs, which are always rising. They say that in any kind of organization or employer, seventy-five percent of your costs are really personnel-related costs. Maintenance of existing parks, of which we have more than thirty parks in our city. So, a new direction. Structurally balanced budget, and what I mean by that is, for the first time in well over a decade, if not more, ongoing operations are now funded, all of them are now funded by ongoing revenues, meaning there's no use of one-time dollars to make, to balance the budget. That is historic for this budget document. And I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you, our new Finance Director, he's been here six months now, but this is the first budget that myself and he have worked on, and this is a structurally sound budget in which we're not using gimmicks or one-time money to keep employees with that steady stream of employment, because ongoing revenue has to meet ongoing revenue stream, they have to match up. And now that, now it does. So, and that was the direction that my leadership team gave Ade, and this is what he, this is what he helped us come, and we're gonna talk about how we got there. And that, in large part, has to do with the new reserved fund policy. So, let's talk about that. Reserve fund policy. It requires about nine million dollars, or seventeen percent of the operations budget in reserve fund to be, to be as a balance in the general fund. Now, this exceeds the GFOA requirement, the national organization or international organization. Now, in two thousand fifteen, seventeen percent would essentially be seventeen, or excuse me, seven point eight million, eighteen million, and seventeen percent in two thousand sixteen would be seven point six-six million. That's what's required. Here, this budget projects more than nine million in fund balances per year, so we're even exceeding what the GFOA is saying in regard, what you should have in regard to fund balances, leftover money available in case of emergencies. No new taxes. Now, that is, obviously, in regard to, we still have a policy of doing the one percent cap and property tax increase allowed by state law, but other than that, we are not proposing any kind of tax or fee increases. Moving Federal Way forward. This is ultimately, and I say this all the time, a municipal organization, a municipal corporation is a service-delivery organization. That's our mission. And this, this document, and the document itself is a mission statement about what matters to this council and to my staff and myself about what our priorities are. These are the highlights. We are going to be hiring, or seeking to hire, and we're seeking authorization from the council, five new police positions and three new additional police cars. We got great news last week, that we got a federal cops grant that will fund four of those five officers for three years, that'll cover sixty percent of those salaries. So, this will be, you know, cops on the street, and that'll help us with this operating revenue, to keep those, to get those officers in those cars on the street, to make this a safer city. Also, we had been hearing from the Lakota neighborhood on the west side of our city about major renovations that are necessary, and we had three-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars saved away in an account that was ready for development. There is a great need in that area, and so, with the help of Ade and my Chief of Staff and our Department Directors and John Hutton, we found an additional three-hundred-thousand dollars in our city resources to add for a total of seven-hundred-thousand dollars that would go toward major renovations at Lakota Park. We're gonna be talking about that. Obviously, this is where Lakota Junior High is, and we're going to need the partnership of our co-user at that location and major user, which is the school district. And so, this is meant as a, essentially a down payment and a show of goodwill and good faith on our part to respond, but we're gonna need the school district to come up with some monies as well in regard to partnering to get the amenities that we need at that location. As we discussed before, two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars was able to keep our clinics not just open for a year, which was what we negotiated, but because we took, this council, because you took that brave step and stepped into this, we got two years for the price of one. All right, and Councilmember Honda will be happy to hear this, as well as I'm sure many of you, many of you as well, that for a long time, we've had the three-fifty-second Street project on the books, and that is, you know, down where Costco is, connecting Enchanted Parkway with Pacific Highway. This is a key economic development driver. We have found two million dollars, and to my, to my understanding, that will leverage four million dollars of grant money. Is that correct, Marwan?
That's correct.
All right, Marwan Salum, here, our Public Works Director. You're welcome. Well, I'm a man of my word, and we told you when we passed the PAC that this was a priority, and this did it, and you're gonna like the next one, too, because. Dumas Bay Center. Dumas Bay is a true gem, and we're gonna have to look, anybody who's been down at that area knows this is one of the most beautiful pristine areas, and in the long run, we're gonna be talking about a strategic vision for something that could really, really enhance that spot. But for now, we've got a facility that is aging, has aging carpets, the furniture is frayed, the carpet's frayed, the furniture's older, and we need about three-hundred-thousand dollars. We have found three-hundred-thousand dollars for chairs, carpeting, carpeting is about a hundred thousand of it just by itself. But the place needs a facelift with paint. We have all kinds of conferences in that area, people from all over the region go to this location, and for three-hundred-thousand dollars, we can really give this a real facelift, and then be thinking about what the long-term vision of that site is. And I would suggest that at our retreat in January, we have a discussion about what the long-term plans for that site are. But in the meanwhile, Dumas Bay is gonna get a facelift. And if you see down the bottom right, you see the, right there with the, with the box art? Gary Gillespie was here, did Gary give up on us? Gary Gillespie spearheaded this, he's an Arts Commission member, and those boxes right there, I've got my pointer right here, it won't work, right there, I don't wanna get Councilmember DuKlow in the eye. Not a good way to win support on the council. But anyway, we've got these utility box art, we've got a bunch of, really, a blank canvas throughout this community, and if you go where the Red Robin is, on the backside of that now, we've got the umbrellas. This is a pilot project that we started here in the City of Federal Way to beautify what right now are just gray or green boxes. And so, now for the next year, we're gonna put fifteen thousand dollars in that utility box art, and we're gonna dip our toe in the water and see what we can get for our value. We're not gonna put ongoing money yet, we wanna see how far we can get with the fifteen, but it's certainly well worth the investment. On the backside of Town Square Park, there's a beautiful floral pattern, and again, we've got this right next to the Transit Center, so that's really exciting. But we just did, now that's one-time funding, just for the next year, and we'll see how we're at with that. Okay, operate and enhance two thousand fourteen donations to the city. Once again, Brooklake was donated to us, and one of the really exciting things, you guys, is eventually, it's our vision that the Brooklake Community Center that is contained on the front of this will be the entryway to the West Hylvis Watershed, and that will connect the boardwalk together, this'll be a museum, and that's what's going to be discussed in regard to the plans for that facility. But in the meanwhile, we need to operate that facility and talk about a visioning, and we also have, you could see right there in that picture, the downtown police substation, which we donated, twenty-one hundred, twenty-one hundred square feet of office space donated to the city for a police substation that's directly across the street from our Transit Center, so, to enhance services. All right, budget highlights. Revitalizing downtown Federal Way. We've got the construction of the Performing Arts and Conference Center will be opening in two thousand sixteen. We're going to be investing in staff to manage that, and obviously, the run-up to that, because that project is going to be on time and on budget, and we've got, right now, we're in the process of selecting a PAC leader for the project, who will take Ken's place, but also, we're starting the process of seeking a director for that eventual site, and we're putting all those pieces together. We're also going to enhance and operate the popular Town Square Park, Federal Way's first downtown park. We talked about that earlier tonight, about that visioning process, I'm very excited. And I think, in answer to the Chair of our Parks Commission, I, you know, we don't have a firm offer on that site right now, so we're gonna have a vibrant discussion about what that looks like, and that's going to take us into the spring before we'll be asking for a final vote on the remodel. I call it Town Square Park two-point-oh, 'cause we've got a great model right now, but we need some trees and some other things. All right, focused approach to economic development, we've got Tim Johnson, our new Economic Development Director, all the way from Sacramento, California, he's been a great, he's working right now, the number, his number-one priority and our staff's number-one priority, I don't wanna say domestically, but non-police-related, is filling the Warehouser Campus, which will come empty in two thousand sixteen. So, we've met three or four times with them, we just had a meeting last week with Heartland, and we are developing a strategic plan moving forward, which outreach to Fortune one-hundred and five-hundred companies to actively go out and market that property. We're developing an economic development strategy with the coordination of the council, and we're working on business recruitment. That picture there was from Kohl's, and we, were all kinds of exciting things happening in the City of Federal Way, economic development. Investment in human capital, which is very important, remember, your cost with any kind of organization are about seventy-five percent of your cost. That picture down the bottom right was my first day as mayor, where I gathered all the city employees over at the community center, and I told them, and several of the council members were there, that the human capital, the institutional knowledge matters, and those employees did not have a cost of living increase for six years, and that was not right. And we took steps right away, right after that, I went back to City Hall, and with the assistance of the City Council, we got a cost of living increase, and we, with all of our negotiating units, have been working on making sure that we're fairly compensating the people who work in the service-delivery organization, because as we all know, what happens if you don't do that, your human capital will walk out the door, and we don't, we are not gonna allow that to happen. And so, they also make sure that this budget that we're doing includes no layoffs, and we are adjusting compensation to keep our city competitive in the public labor market. Between, this is an interesting thing, between two thousand eight and twelve, the city's workforce reduced from three-hundred-and-fifty-three full-time equivalents, or an employee, down to two-hundred-and-seventy-eight. Now, obviously, that was the result of the Great Recession, and so now, we're in the process of putting the meat on the bones, back on the bones. And we had always envisioned that, and things are, with our code, with our business and our permits that are coming in, this city is exploding in growth, and we've got all kinds of great news between Progressive Insurance Claim Center, the Seattle Children's Hospital that's coming in, or Children's Hospital, all kinds of great things. The twenty-seven million dollar investment that represents the investment of the commons, et cetera. So, here, in this budget, we're adding ten-point-three-two, well, if the council agrees with me, and that's where, that's what this process is about, to really feel this process out. And so, my partners here, where and I are gonna be discussing this. I propose an addition of ten-point-three-two FTEs in the next biennium over our current levels. And they, also, that'll take us, if that is adopted, to three-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-two-zero FTEs. And we're gonna go, you know, item by item, department by department, in separate presentations in this very room, and I'll tell you what those dates are per department at the very end. The Federal Way Police Department has one-hundred-and-sixty FTEs, and our philosophy is, and we wanted to make sure this is on there, because we were looking at different structural models and looking at proposals. Our, and we've been working very closely with our Chief, Andy Wong, who's doing a phenomenal job. Our mantra is cops on the street, supervisors in the field. We have an addition of, we're, again, five police officers, and the cops grant is funding for those officers. In regard to the Mayor's Office, we put Economic Development Director and perhaps a supporting staff member in the Mayor's Office to make sure that we are working hand and gloved, that we're working every day, that this isn't just something that's happening in a corner of the building. We brought that into my office. Community development, in that department, there are twenty-six-point-seven proposed employees, that would be an additional three FTEs in building and planning departments in two thousand fourteen to address service demands, and an addition of two-hundred-thousand dollars for specialized inspection and plan review. Do you know why this is necessary? Because the people that work for the city right now, some of our inspectors are having to go through one-hundred inspections per day, and that is, that is a crushing workload. So, what we're doing right now is adding these FTEs, as we said we would when we had to cut these numbers back, because I don't wanna see Happy Days are here again, because somebody used that once, but, but, you know, this, this economy is booming, and we wanna make sure that we have the people in place to meet that demand. And the last thing we wanna do, frankly, is have these big developments happen and be coming in, and have delays because we don't have the staff to get it out the door. And that's the key thing, we wanna make sure that the message in the South Sound and throughout Washington State is, we're open for business. All right. So, Public Works, addition of four FTEs for Development Service Manager, Street Systems Manager, Surface Water Management Inspector, Surface Water Management Maintenance Worker, funding for a snow and ice brim production and storage facility. I'm gonna pretend like I know what that means, I'm just kidding. It's all about snow management, and we did, we actually did put in the budget previously that was carryover a front loader. We actually found the resources, because our Public Works people said, when the snow hits the ground, we need to make sure that we've got that in place to make sure that we get those trucks turned around and get those roads plowed, and so that's what that's all about. So, I was just kidding. Okay, Parks and Recreation, thirty-four-point-five-five, full-time equivalents, community center enhancements including building and equipment updates, yeah, things get old after a while, Dumas Bay Updates and enhancements to furniture, painting, and equipment, and additional parks maintenance workers. Law Department, we are restructuring a current aide in the domestic, in the, in the Law Department to be a full domestic violence advocate, to provide service and support for victims of domestic violence, which is an absolute, as I said, especially at the misdemeanor level, is homicide prevention. And it's something that I've had an eye on, I'd like to thank our city attorney, our city prosecutor in that transition, and we're in that transition right now to make sure that when people call nine-one-one, that we are able to finish that service delivery and get safety for them. Okay, Finance Department, additional FTE for services, both internal and at the Fedrec Committee, to make sure that we're processing those items. City Departments, I should say, our Finance Director sits on the International Board of Financial Review, so we're very appreciative of all his service. City Clerks, we've gone from one-point-eight FTEs to two-point-five to make sure that that workload is manageable. Improve transparency and clarity, that's in regard to the fund management. Remember that we passed Prop One a few years ago in regard to police officers and judges and some other things. and some other things. So we wanted to make sure that there's transparency about those monies that we're collecting, that they're actually going to where we said they're going to go, and I'd like to, again, thank Aday for that. So this eliminates major fund, interfund transfers. We've got health insurance tracked separately, and the Traffic Safety Photo Enforcement Fund is maintained as a separate fund, and that really helps us in regard to how we track payment of officers. It just really makes sure that the money is going where it's supposed to go, it's not just jumbled into one pot, and it really is making this a much more transparent process. Utility and Proposition Number One will be tracked in separate funds. There's been some questions over the years about where's that money actually going, and that's a public trust issue. When we asked, when we went out to the voters and that was passed, we promised that money was going to be used for that purpose, and that's what Aday has done and what we've been working on with this process. And the salaries of the affected positions paid directly out of the fund. This is a conservative budget approach. Economy's still recovering from 2008 recession. City revenues are usually the first to suffer and the last to recover. This addresses community needs with fiscal prudence. Unfunded requests, we have a, we had a number of unfunded requests, but we're going to know, by the time February, end of February comes in, we're going to know what the final balance is in regard to where we ended up in the year, and if we have one-time requests, we'll analyze that now, but we're not going to do that now. That's not a conservative budget approach. So if we have, we've got certain needs in certain areas of the city, and we're going to see where that money comes out and then make those determinations, and obviously, the council will be involved in that process. Federway Moving Forward. This is an exciting new direction in public safety and quality of life. It addresses community needs and most vulnerable among us, the poor and our kids. It's structurally balanced, meaning to pay ongoing expenses out of ongoing revenues, and that means it's sustainable, which is the name of the game. And on behalf of the mayor's office and myself, I'd like to say thank you to the City Council for your input, and your input yet to come. This is a proposal and that I hope you'll accept, but we need to hear your input, and we need to hear the input from the public. I'd like to thank the department directors and city staff. The Finance Director gets a special shout-out for this telephone book he put together of vital information, and thank you to the Federway residents for your input and for the process yet to come. Okay, now, this is, these are the upcoming meetings. Obviously, I gave my presentation tonight. On October 15th, we have special council meetings, budget overview, revenue expenditure projections, so we'll have Finance on, this will be a week from tomorrow, so next Wednesday at 6:00 PM here, we're going to hear from Finance, Public Works, and Parks and Rec, and they're going to give line-by-line presentations, and you're going to, and we're going to probably be here in front of the dais. We'll put a square here. It'll be televised. It'll be good fun. On October 22nd at 6:00 PM, we'll have Police, Law, Municipal Court Department give their presentations. On November 4th, special City Council meeting in the mayor's office, in fact, the mayor's office will be presenting, probably in the form of our Chief of Staff, Brian Wilson, and that'll be City Council, Human Resources, Information, IT, City Clerk's Office, Community Development will give presentations, and then we'll have some deliberations at that time. Again, that's November 4th. At the seven, and then 7:00 PM, we'll have a regular City Council meeting, which the public hearing will be held for this budget. November 18th, again, if needed, for continued council deliberations. And November 18th, 7:00 PM, regular council meeting, again, a public hearing, introduction of the ordinance for the 15-16 biennial budget, and introduction of the property tax levy, which we do every year capped out at one percent. And then December 2nd, regular City Council meeting for final vote and enactment of the budget. So with that, council, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have about sort of this overview. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for a very clear presentation. It was very understandable, and I just appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to the ongoing meetings and learning more about each, the budget for each division, or whatever you call it. Sorry.
That's right.
Department, department.
That's it.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you. And I'd like to say a special thanks to Kathy Arnt, who helped me with the graphics. I'm nowhere near good at putting a PowerPoint together. She did all the heavy lifting. We had Chris Carroll in the back of the room, who helped out, we got our chief as well, and all the department heads. I really appreciate it. We've got Lydia, Councilmember Sepha Dawson, for a comment.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the clear message, like you said. I'm really excited about the domestic violence legal advocate. I think it's very important, very necessary, and thank you for recognizing the need for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. All right. Deputy Mayor, did you have anything? Okay, great. Councilmember DuKlo? All right. All right. And council, we are always open for questions, and so this is a collaboration. You know, we've got such a great council, and we've got such a respectful collaborative approach to this process, so this is a conversation that we're starting. And so I look forward to working with you on this. Oh, Councilmember Honda, on that note.
I just want to encourage the public to come to the budget meetings, because it is a, this is a city's budget, and it's a people's budget, so I would encourage you to come to let us know what you think and to give your input.
Very good. Thank you very much. We all echo that comment. Okay, with that, oh, Councilmember DuKlo.
Yeah, I think I do want to say something. I really appreciate our new finance, Aday, I forget his title, but anyway, he's really brought a new look at our finances and how they're presented, and I think we're going to be making some changes to make the reports more readable and understandable, and I appreciate working with him very much on the Finance Committee, and I think you did a great job in stealing him away from where you got him. Thank you.
Every day, you have no idea how happy I am to have Aday here at City Hall, so every day, I'm affirmed of that, and we're putting together a great team here at City Hall. So thank you very much, and thank you, Aday, and your staff. Okay. All right. With that, we'll move on to the next item. Confirmation of our city attorney, and Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Yes, it is my privilege to move to confirm the appointment of Amy Jo Piersall as city attorney for the city of Federway.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Amy Jo, would you like to say something?
I just really appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to working with you for many years. Thanks.
You've earned this opportunity, Amy Jo. We're so excited for you. All right. All right, now, next item, confirmation of our city clerk, Stephanie Courtney, Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Thank you. I am pleased to move to confirm the appointment of Stephanie Courtney as our city clerk.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're it. Congratulations. Stephanie, would you like to say something?
Just echo what Amy Jo said. I'm just excited for the opportunity.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's make sure that gets in the minutes.
Okay.
No, we're so excited. Thank you so much. All right. These were, you know, you guys have been mayor for nine months now, and these have been easy decisions, so, and gladwin's on my part, so thank you very much. Look forward to working with you. All right. Diversity Commission appointment, Councilmember Honda.
I move to appoint Chris Keen Lombard as a voting member of the Diversity Commission to fill the remainder of an expired term of May 31st, 2016.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passes. All right, council reports. Councilmember DuKlo.
Oh, starting with me. Actually, I don't have a whole lot to say. I did have a constituent call, and I won't give her a name, but she was talking about the new park facility, and she wanted to suggest, and I think the suggestion was made before by Councilmember Selsky or something to it, but she was talking about having an artificial ice rink down there, and she thought that would be a great attraction for people from all around the county and other places. And she was talking about the fact that they are actually made in Tacoma, and you can turn it into a dance floor, you can put covers over it and do many different things. She also thought it would be a good attraction, and then you could have a gazebo and picnic tables and stuff, so it might be a thought to have some of our designers at least look at. I told her I'd bring it to the council and put it in front of her.
That'd be great.
Let's see. The other thing I wanted to talk about is I did, on the Mayor's Day of Concern, I was out, I saw you at the 21st Avenue Safeway, collecting food for, at the MSC Food Bank, and I'm really proud to say that this year, it seemed to go a lot better for us, because before I left, my whole barrel was full.
Yeah.
And I walked over to the other door, and that one was too, and the year before that, when I left, after two hours, it was like half-full, so it seemed like people were really picking up the information. Either that, or I was, my sexy routine out there got them really distracted. But anyway, and it was also nice that it wasn't raining, and it wasn't cold, the sun was out, and people were feeling good, so that might have added to it too, but thank you anyway for doing that. It was very good. I wanted to say, the next meeting, you don't have to hear the results of the RPC meeting tonight, because we haven't had it. It's been changed to the end of the month, this month, on October 22nd, so you all spared that. There's also, the November meeting has been canceled, so there's only another meeting in December, so there's only two more, and then that's it. I'm done with the Regional Policy Committee, because I will have aged off of it, and you won't have to hear anything more about that. But some of the things that we're looking at for the next couple of meetings are really important. The one is the status of the city's interlocal agreement with the county, which was a very hot topic a few years ago, and we may be looking at that again. Again, solid waste rates and the proposed 2015-2016 budget and policy implications. Update on the Public Safety Emergency Network Radio Replacement Project, which is of great interest to all of us and very, very important to all of us, because we know of the dead spots that we have with that. So I think there's going to be some exciting talks, hopefully, in the next two months that I'll be able to report back to you. And I think that is the end of my report for tonight.
Oh, thank you, and thank you for being there. It was great to see all the council members there, and so the totals were, I couldn't find that email, but it's been handed to me. We got one-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-five pounds of non-perishable items, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars and fifty-eight cents, and ten gift cards. So that's quite a generous mark by our community, so thank you very much. All right, Councilmember Moore.
Well, lots of activities that are happening around our great city. Last week was certainly the opening of Dick's Sporting Goods, a great place to go shopping. And also, last week, I had to, I had an opportunity to attend an event to see a movie called Citizen's Coke, just kind of a reminder of how much campaign finance reform is needed. Also, last week, had the opportunity to attend the Federway Chamber Luncheon with the candidate debate. Furthermore, I had the opportunity to attend the 22nd Annual Breakfast of Champions with the Washington Conservation Voters in Seattle. Certainly reminded me that we have a lot of work to do to do our part in making this earth as clean and as efficient for generations to come for the future. So I look forward to playing a role in that. Let's see. I think with that being said, those are some of the activities I've been attending. Also, wanted to take the time to say thank you to the mayor and to my colleagues for earlier's vote on the inclusion resolution. That certainly means a lot to me and to thousands of other people and to all of us on the council, and look forward to working towards the future of that as well, and just want to say thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Selsky.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Farrell. Got a couple of things. It is indeed a busy season right now. There are so many fundraisers going on and so many different events for the schools and the city and whatnot. It's almost hard to keep track of everything, but a lot of excitement going on. And one of the big event that's coming up, it's a fundraiser for the Multi-Service Center, and I wanted to discuss this quickly tonight. It's the First Annual MSC Helps Luncheon, and it takes place at Emerald Downs a week from tomorrow, next Wednesday, at 11:30 AM. And this is really a support of the Multi-Service Center and the various projects that they're doing for our community in the South Sound, or South King County, I should say. And of course, one of the big projects they're rolling out is the veterans apartments up on the north side of the city of Federway, up by 272nd. Big, big deal, especially for the veterans in conjunction with the entire mission of the MSC. So that's next Wednesday, 11:30, and I'm very honored to be named as the honorary chair of that event, and I encourage max participation by our community to come and support that event, again, to help fund these worthy MSC events. The keynote speaker is somebody of significance to Federway. It's Tom Vanderark. He's the former superintendent of the Federway School District, and he also is former executive director of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, so he's well-connected. He's going to have some great things to say to us and inspire us to help the MSC in all of its efforts. And for those that can't go, you can certainly make an online donation to mschelps.org. Just want to follow up on the Mayor's Day of Concern. Our little group at Safeway, and we were visited by the mayor, Councilmember Honda, I think, was making the rounds, but I was really privileged to serve that day with my wife. How often do you get a chance to be with your wife and do something fun like this? So that was, that was nice. Jerry Lynn's son was there helping and reaching out to the community, taking in a lot of donations. Mark Copang, Councilmember Moore was there with us, so just, we just really had a nice time in connecting with the citizens, and a lot of them just doing their part, walking in, grabbing some food or whatever, and bringing it out to us. So it was a, it was a really great effort. And lastly, we, I was able to go to the Advancing Leadership spaghetti feed at the Federway Community Center this past Saturday night, and I'd like to say thank you to Chief Wong, who kind of spearheaded that effort. He's very involved with advancing leadership. It was a great fundraiser. A lot of money was raised, a lot of people from the community were there taking part in this. And you know what? One of our really gems of our city was recognized that night. Janice Sebenoller, as, just for all the great things she's doing, she was honored, and I'll tell you what, Janice has done so much for our community in so many different ways, and it was a great, a great thing for her to be recognized in such a way, so that's all I have.
Thank you. And you know, talking about the Mayor's Day of Concern, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Jerry Lynn, our assistant at City Hall, who just did, in fact, it was kind of funny, because as I was going to one location, she was going to the other. We kept missing each other at all the different locations, but we finally hooked up at the end, and thank you so much for bringing your family and being involved in that, and for finally giving me this piece of paper. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Federway Domestic Task Force for being here tonight. That was just a portion of the members, and for the city for recognizing it with the proclamation that this is, October is the month to recognize that. On Saturday, at St. Vincent DePaul Parish Social Hall, October 11th, from 10 to 2, there is a presentation which will be discussing domestic violence, and it not only talks about the impacts of domestic violence on defendants, but on victims and families, along with ideas of how, as a community, we can act to work on this. I'd also like to thank the mayor for allowing the silhouettes to be downstairs. When you walk into the front door, you'll see two silhouettes, and on each silhouette is a story of a victim of domestic violence. And I first ran into those several years ago at City Hall in Renton, and the lobby was full of them, and it was very, something I'll never forget. You couldn't take a step without running into a silhouette and reading the story, but I'd like to thank the mayor for allowing those to be downstairs. I'd also like to thank the Federway Historical Society for doing the research on the painting, and it's so cool to have it here. My family, my grandfather was a logger down at Redondo, and it's just really cool. The Federway Historical Society, if anyone is interested, you can purchase a membership, and it's a very small fee, but it helps support this society. There's a fundraiser for inclusion, an inclusion program. It's Oktoberfest. It's our first fundraiser. It is sponsored by the city of Federway and the Kiwanis Club. It will be on Friday, October 24th, from 6:00 to 9:00, at the Federway Community Center. Center. There's a suggested donation of fifteen dollars at the door. There'll be baskets to bid on. There'll be a cake donation thing to, a dessert auction. There'll be music. There'll be dancing. There'll be food. And it's to raise money for the extras. It's to raise money for scholarships for the, those folks who use our inclusion program. So, if you can possibly come, it would be great. And my husband would like me to announce that the Federal Way High School alumni last tour of the Federal Way High School building is on October eighteenth, which is a Saturday. And you'd have to ask him for all of the details, but I know there's been a lot of interest in this over the summer. He's gotten a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls about it. And this school is being rebuilt. I'm sure anyone who drives by there will see the portable is being brought in to house the students for the next couple of years. So, if you're interested, if you're an alumni, if you're interested in going through the building one last time, get in touch with my husband. And next Tuesday, October fourteenth, is our Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee meeting. We will be having an in-depth discussion of Lakota Park and what we can do as a city. I'd invite anyone interested to come and talk to us about it. We'd like to know what the community would like. And that will begin at five o'clock. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. I have actually been out of town for the last couple of weeks, so I don't have really anything to report, other than I, I was on the phone a lot. I had a lot of, I did, I did do a little bit in terms of the college initiative, just some phone calls. But other than that, I was out visiting family, so.
Very good. Good to have you back.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Sephedosan.
I too is on vacation, so I don't have much to report, but I'm looking forward to studying this report for the next few months.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Thank you very much. The Lodging Tax Meeting, the next one, will be this Thursday at eight o'clock in the morning. And one of the items on the agenda will be a review of the Tourism Enhancement Grant Process. They, that Subcommittee met earlier this week to review the applications that are, would provide some additional funding to, to organizations and programs that help to bring tourists to this area. And that money comes from the one percent lodging tax that's allocated to the city of Federal Way. I also want to mention something that the Historical Society additionally has been doing, and that is working with the South County Cultural Group in putting together this analysis and historical review of the development of the telegraph. And in particular, as it was used to, during the Civil War and some other, you know, of course, until we developed things like the Internet and computers. But there is a wonderful display at the Historical Society Building at Steel Lake Park on South three twelve. And I was able to stop by there on Saturday, and it's really fascinating to, to see that display. They have a final presentation there tomorrow between the hours of ten and two. So, if anyone is interested and wants to stop by, that would be worthwhile. Our city, our community is extremely generous. You've heard some different fundraisers mentioned this evening, some of which have already occurred and some of which are planned. And what's very impressive to me is the fact that when there's a new fundraiser, it turns out usually to be very successful. And the continuing fundraisers continue to be successful. This represents a very strong spirit of generosity in our community. And related to that, there is a, another fundraiser coming up on October thirtieth, and this is the Federal Way Community Caregiving Network's Super Supper that they hold every year at Steel Lake Presbyterian Church. This year, it will be from five-thirty to eight. And for a very nominal entry fee, people come and are served a huge variety of soups. And it's sort of all, all you can eat. You can go back for refills of your soup bowl. And there are condiments. There's bread along with it and dessert, some pie usually. So, it's a wonderful event and the Community Caregiving Network serves the community in so many ways. They have the community suppers three times a week for the community. They have emergency services when people are in need in various ways, emergency housing. They have numerous programs that they offer for those less fortunate in our community. Then I want to also mention something related to the presentation this evening on the planned Performing Arts and Conference Center, where we had the design update. There is a musical celebration planned for Saturday, November first. It's called Schindig. And this is going to include five entertainers who are internationally and regionally acclaimed performers. They will offer an exciting variety of musical entertainment. Their names are Robert McPherson, who grew up in Federal Way and has sung with the Metropolitan Opera. He is now doing that kind of work. He has also sung at various locations in Europe. John B. Cooper has worked with Robert McPherson in vocalizing, as has Maria Valenzuela, who will also be performing. Dohee Kim has sung with the Federal Way Symphony and at other venues regionally. And Leon Christian has performed locally, regionally, and beyond. So, again, that's Saturday, November first, seven-thirty PM. Doors open at six forty-five. That's at Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club. The tickets are only twenty dollars apiece. And be happy to provide further information if, for anyone interested. Thank you.
All right. And with that, we are adjourned.